Good morning and welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is ten a.m. All members of the Court are present and this regular meeting is called order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation this morning. It will be delivered by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sorry, it's Commissioner Cook. The other K.
Do heavenly Father, thank you for all the many blessings you've given us. Please watch over us today as we conduct business of the county. I ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Cook. Item number three is to consider and possibly approve the June tenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes as presented by County Beckon, the County Attorney.
Senator.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four is to consider approval of request by Devon McWilliams, County Treasurer, to cancel all registered claims from June tenth, twenty twenty-five, and approval of the cash statement presented today. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the Court to release me of the liability of one million, seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars and ten cents. On the cash report summary and general checking account, we have seven hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred, one dollars and fifty-two cents. First Financial Bank General Checking Special Money Market, twenty-eight million, six hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. And Tech School General, three hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred two dollars and sixty-four cents. For a total in cash funds of twenty-nine million, seven hundred, six thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars and seven cents.
Senator, present.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Candace McKenney, County Auditor. Good morning.
Good morning. Referenced expenditures for June the eleventh through the twelfth were seven hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Referenced expenditures for June the eighteenth were twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Expenditures for today, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, are seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred one dollars and eighteen cents. The total expenditures and transfers are one million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Gross payroll for June the twelfth was six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents. The total transfer for the June twelfth payroll was seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Who played this?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. McKenney. Number six is to consider adoption of resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five authorizing the submission of a request for funds from the two thousand and twenty-five Election Security Help America Vote Act. Grant to improve the administration of elections for federal office, including to enhance election technology and make election security improvements to the systems, equipment and processes used in federal elections as requested by Ms. Alyssa Freeman, Elections Administrator. Morning, Ms. Freeman. How are you?
Good.
So, this specifies twice in here about federal elections, but whatever equipment or processes that this grant pays for, can we also use it for state and local election?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but it specifically says federal, we can use it for everything.
It does. We can still use it. Yes, sir. We just can't run it out to make money on it at any point in time.
And what are we looking at? Do you have a plan?
Yes, I'm looking at purchasing forty-eight pole pads, which are the check-in devices that we use at deploying locations.
Yes, ma'am.
That's how many we currently have. I was thinking of ordering a few extra, just in case something happened to those. Currently, Apple is not going to be servicing them anymore, so we're going to have to upgrade anyway. This is going to help a little bit with that. And these are actually the newer version. I think it's Gen eleven, so we'll be good for hopefully the next three or four years.
Which ones do you currently have? Is it Gen five or six or something like that?
I have a Gen. So, we have thirty-one Gen six and seventeen of the tenth generation. We just purchased those last year. But we're going to go ahead and just update all of them so that we have everything that's exactly the same.
And the ones Apple's not going to support anymore, those older ones, the sixth generation?
Yes, sir. And the company's actually going to buy those back from us, so that's going to help a little bit on the cost as well.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. The only other question I had is, is there any match to this grant?
Yes, sir. There's a twenty percent match. It's a reimbursement grant, so essentially we'll purchase the product and then they'll reimburse us eighty percent.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number seven, discuss considering possibly approved request by Mr. Aaron Tupper, Emergency Management Coordinator, to issue a notice to proceed on the executed contract with NNT Construction for construction of the hurricane safe room. Morning, Mr. Tupper. How are you?
Good morning. Good and y'all?
Good. Can you give us an update on where we are regarding the approval of the, I call it a budget amendment, they call it something different, but it's an increase in the budget?
Yes, sir. The change request has been filed a while back, and within the last couple of weeks, we've been in touch with TDM and their affiliate. In fact, Friday, I was on the phone with our mitigation officer for the, TDM for the region, basically saying, hey, where is this at? And they basically have said the process, the process through them, so the funds are available. They're just waiting for FEMA to actually approve it. So, it's still in FEMA's court. As of this morning, I checked my emails and stuff, and there was no new email saying that the change request had been approved. So, we're still waiting off any of this.
TDM's feelings is that it will be approved?
TDM's feelings is that it will be approved, but we can't have a hundred percent guarantee until FEMA actually approves it. The funds for this grant are available for the cost increase.
Have you or Mrs. Sims spoken with NNT Construction in the past month or so?
I have not spoken with NNT. I have spoken with the architect, and I did explain to the architect that when we tabled it last meeting, I explained that we tabled it and that we would be bringing it up again. I think that was two meetings ago. But anyways, that we'd be bringing it up again. And he said, okay. And he did say that NNT does want to do the job, but he just may not be able to if the costs are more than what he has in mind.
But he hasn't indicated to us since he was here back in April, and he said he needed an answer quickly, and we had told him we would try to provide him one within thirty days. We haven't heard any update from him since then?
We have not talked to him directly.
And now here we are, two months later.
Commissioner, how much, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Do you know how, and I guess I could look and see how much ARPA funds are involved in this project?
The ARPA funds? So, not right off the top of my head. I do know it's over a million because we had a portion of the facility that FEMA wouldn't pay for anyways being paid out of ARPA. Then we also have the camera systems being paid out of ARPA and the control access being paid out of ARPA for that facility. So, it's probably close to, if not right over a million.
And I might be wrong, but I think around six hundred thousand of that goes to the contractor.
Yes, sir.
And the rest of it is for other things the county is going to do.
Yes, sir.
And I know we're between a rock and a hard place on this, but we are regulated by a timeframe on ARPA funds.
Yes, sir. So, the ARPA funds have to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-six. So, they have to be completely closed out and everything at that point. Yes, sir.
I don't know what the recommendation of the judge is going to be on this. I might have jumped the gun by bringing that up or anything, but really, sir?
No, it's a good point.
We need to get going on this because we're, we have, we're limited on the time that we can use the ARPA funds. And we don't know yet whether they're going to come through, FEMA's going to come through with that money. So, if we say today, go ahead and start it, and then we get in the middle of it, and FEMA comes back and says, well, those funds aren't available, we can't drop the project right in the middle of it, we'd have to pull money out of our contingency, I assume, which I don't think would be a good idea. So, really, where, what, where are we at on this? What are you suggesting?
It's a, it's a difficult situation. I would love to see us move forward. It needs to happen. The contractor's been very gracious with us, giving us this extra time, but I could see any day now him telling us that he's going to pull back. That would cause us to have to revisit the project, possibly having to come up with more money in the future to get it done. I think with everything going on at the federal level, it's just things are up in the air. And there's longer delays than we've seen in the past on getting answers on things like this because of all the, I hate to call it turmoil, but that's kind of what it is. It's just kind of, things are unknown at the federal level right now.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go with what the Court advises on this or what the Court decides. I'm just afraid that we're going to get down the road and we're not going to meet that deadline, and we're going to have to come up with more money to replace the ARPA money. And no offense to Commissioner Kirkendall, but I'm afraid this is going to be history. It's going to look back and say this project is the same thing as the dome for the other court, which is a touchy subject. Everybody always condemns the other court for that dome. I'm afraid they're going to do us the same way on this, but anyway.
Do we have a timeframe, start of construction to end of construction? It depends on weather, but, or they tell us?
Yes, sir. Depending on weather, they said right at three hundred days for NNT. It was three hundred days. Other firms had more. There was one that had less, but generalized depending on weather, it was three hundred days.
On the ARPA funds, six hundred thousand to the contractor? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So, that means for his billing for installation or building or whatever?
Yes, sir. It'd basically be building out of the several of the locations inside the facility.
If we had to go out for bid again, and then you got, what, a year process to build it, construct it? Is that what, about what they said, about a year?
On this contractor, yes, sir.
Okay. So, add two months to it. You said on this contractor, so one's a little less, one's a little longer. But an average of a year.
Yes.
We go out for bid again. That's where we end up going, having to do. What is the length of that process? If we had to start over today from scratch, what would the length of the process be? How long would it be?
So, the procurement process is usually about two months, correct? So, it's usually around two months to procure a new contractor. And then at that time, if it's over, we have to ask for another change request. My fear is it's going to end up being a project like Bieber Brook, and we're just never going to get it done.
So, how much will we have to commit out of contingency? About one point five?
Yeah, I knew it was over one point.
Put you on the spot. Do you know where we're at on contingency?
Not off the top, but I think what I gave you the last couple of quarters.
Plus whatever.
That includes the unautomated figure that we got from Mrs. McKenney about a month ago?
So, we'd get twelve and a half.
Yes, roughly.
Another thing too to consider is on the ARPA, if you go back out for bids, we can't go back out on the ARPA side of things.
True. I didn't think about that. It's already allocated to this contractor, and all allocations were filed last December.
And that's about a million?
Yes, sir. All together with the different vendors.
And the total project is how much?
The total project with the...
Five million?
It's going to be right at about six at this point because of the control access, the camera systems and all that that we've added.
So, we're probably at... Twenty percent would be, if we had paid out of contingencies, about twenty percent of the project.
If we don't get that approval from FEMA, otherwise it should be closer to seven percent?
If the Court decides, I mean, I can go with it. We're already this far along. We've already discovered the need. Leave us with twelve million in the contingency.
Well, I think that, is it two million that we're looking for or one point seven million?
One point.
Is it one point seven million that increased?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Yes.
That's the amount we're waiting on FEMA?
I feel like I agree with Commissioner Cooper that this is between a rock and a hard place, and obviously, we don't want to get in a bind or make any decisions that will negatively affect our constituents. But there has been a lot of work put into this. We saw the need during Harvey just to house all of the first responders that were coming here to help us. And we housed them in the old hospital, and that is no longer there.
And in here, too.
And in here. We had them sleeping in the hallways. They were in offices. They were everywhere. And we're very thankful that they chose us to come and help. And I feel like one point seven million dollars is obviously a lot of money, but for a building like this, if we were to, in the future, build more office space or another annex or add-on to our annex, we would not be able to get it for this price.
Looking back, if I remember correctly, we're going to be limited on what we can put into that building after it's completed. I'm talking about on a daily basis because of this grant. Is that correct or am I wrong?
So, it will need to be able to be stood up as a hurricane safe room, tornado safe room, very quickly. So, you can utilize it for other things, but it just needs to be adapted.
So, we can have personnel in it?
There...
You've got offices?
Yes.
So, there are offices, yes, sir.
Okay.
There's currently a...
We're going to move the emergency management over there, and I think, what are the other provisions we have? An office for the TDM person that's local will go in there. There's a few other things, and then if we ever needed to add on to it later to add other offices, we can do that. We just have to have, eighty percent of the space has to be available to stand up for emergency operations when needed.
And it's also designed to where a second floor can be put in. The support and everything of the first floor and the height of the building is allowable for a second floor to be put in at any point in time.
The way, the way, and I don't remember on the design, you probably have a copy, but the way an ex was designed to expand to the east, which would be toward this safe room, how much space would we have on that if that ever came up? Not much?
I don't believe there would be hardly any space to go out.
He had it on to be on a second story.
All right. This is a project you help you build and never have to use.
It's, I...
But if you give a cap three, cap four, this is going to become very important. You've got showers in there for first responders, correct?
Yes, sir. There are showers. There's laundry. There's kitchen. It's a complete safe room. You can stay in there for days. It'll have backup battery power. It has provisions for water, pot of water, hookup for in case we lose city water. It's, it'll be stated off the...
So, I'd know we use one point.
So, before you make your motion, Chris, the way this is listed is to proceed. So, what we're allowing today is proceed with this project. And if we come up to a situation where FEMA doesn't, then we would have to come back and do a budget amendment, I would assume.
That'd be my most.
So, unless not, what is the number?
Yeah, that'd be my most to proceed.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to issue the notice to proceed to NNT Construction for construction of the hurricane safe room, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? I think we did all that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Item number eight, consider approval of request by Mr. Aaron Tupper, Emergency Management Coordinator, to authorize the County Judge to execute DR four-four-eight-five Texas COVID-nineteen Pandemic Sub Grant Award Contract and any other required documents with Texas Division of Emergency Management outlining the terms of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, DR four-four-eight-five, Project oh-five-two-four, Harden County Mill Creek Drainage Study, in the amount of six hundred seventy-two thousand dollars, including the local cost share of sixty-four thousand dollars to be paid by Harden County.
Sir.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, consider approval of request by the Honorable Rebecca Walton, District Attorney, to amend the District Attorney's Pre-Trial Divergence Budget for fiscal year twenty-five and to approve a stipend payable to the Paralegal Secretary in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars per month from July first, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, to be paid out of the fiscal year twenty-five District Attorney's Office Pre-Trial Divergence Budget as follows. Increase revenue in the pre-trial diversion revenue line item zero-two-one-three-four-zero-three-hundred in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred, seventy-nine dollars, and increase expenditures in the salaries clerical line item and the fringes line items that go along with that in the same amount, totaling two thousand, seven, seventy-nine.
Senator.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? Anything you want to say? Yes, ma'am. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number ten, consider and possibly authorize the County Judge to sign Amendment Number One of the Engineering Service Agreement with Schaumburg &amp; Polk Incorporated under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Contract, BR four-four-eight-five. This amendment is to modify the duration of the original contract dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. This is for the generator projects?
Yes, sir. We actually were able to get the group modified to include all HMGP projects because we had on here another one that we would just have to bring back to court next court. So, we were able to get the modified to include Mill Creek, Mill Creek Drainage Study, Boggy Creek Drainage Study, Lompton Generators.
Everything that Schaumburg &amp; Polk is.
Yes, sir.
And we had a notice from TDM that we needed an end date on these contracts. Is that what the amendment is?
Yes, sir. It's just to follow with the contract end date of the actual projects. There can be extensions, and if there are extensions, we'll have to extend these contracts as well, but we're hoping not to have to extend any of that.
Senator.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Kirkendall, if you don't mind, I'm going to bring up, Mr. Kirkendall was asking me this morning if we had an update on the Holland Road project. That's one that got approved, didn't it?
Schaumburg &amp; Polk are the engineers. I just really haven't heard anything about it. I had emailed the judge on this one. Just wondered if it was that, and I don't remember if the City of Coons got one and Holland got taken off, but...
I don't believe Holland was taken off. I know that application is still in process. I can look in TDM's portal and see. I don't remember seeing it as an approved project at this time. TDM's had some changes, and luckily, they're good changers. They're starting to process these a lot quicker. So, all these basically that were on for today, we've gotten them in two weeks. So, in turn, they're processing these and going through.
If you don't mind.
On the Holland Road Cemetery, when there were some questions about benefits and stuff of that nature, and in fact, some documentation from our last little rain event shows that we had had a rescue on Holland Road. So, we need to definitely supply that information as well, and hopefully, that'll bump it over the edge. But at this time, I don't believe it's been completely approved. I will look on, in the grant portal.
Yeah, if there's anything we can get to. Just for public information, Holland Road has a huge culvert that floods every time you get a decent rain, and the residents are forced to go out to nine forty-three, which adds probably twenty miles to their route to come to Coons. And so, we've been working hard to try to find a solution for that, and that would be tremendous for this community.
TDM tried to step them out of a logging road, and I explained to them they couldn't do that. And so, that was one of the things that they're like, oh, they can cut it off by going through this logging road. And I said, no, they can't. That's not a public program.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Number eleven is to consider and possibly authorize the County Judge to execute Administration Professional Services Part One Agreement with Trader &amp; Associates Incorporated under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, DR four-four-eight-five dash zero-five-two-two. Now, it says five-one-eight on the agenda that was filed, but it's zero-five-two-two, and it has been corrected on the actual agreement. That is the Boggy Creek Drainage Study and DR four-four-eight-five dash zero-five-two-four, which is the Mill Creek Drainage Study. This is with Trader &amp; Associates.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims, Purchasing Agent, to present results of bids received for all metal culverts and miscellaneous junk. Good morning, Ms. Sims.
Good morning. Bids were received, were supposed to be received on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five at two p.m., and we received none.
No bids.
Judge, I'd like to move that we can sell it as a deal.
Just scrap it.
Just scrap it.
Okay. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to scrap the metal culverts and miscellaneous junk that we received no bids for, and seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
Judge, isn't there a process that we could go through, for lack of better words, following the signs on these? This is the second or third time that we've had no bids. Do we have to come back each time? Because I got some of this, and I'm about ready to get rid of. Do we have to come back each time? Or can we just say, well, because of the history?
A lot of parts.
I'd have to do a lot of research, but I think you do. I think you have to offer it to for sale and then bring it to court and say we didn't receive any. But let me do some research and get that to you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thirteen, consider approval of request by Mr. Alex Parker, Floodplain Administrator, to end the warranty period for Dana Lane located in Sire Lake Precinct three and accept this road into the County Road and Bridge Maintenance System. Commissioner Young?
I met with the engineers and Mr. Parker last week to go over the punch list that we gave them to correct on this road, and they did that, so we make a motion to accept it into our county maintenance system.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen, consider adoption of resolution twenty-five dash twenty-five authorizing submission of the Office on Violence Against Women fiscal year twenty-five Real Domestic Violence Dating Violence Sexual Assault and Stalking Program Application with the U.S. Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women, as requested by Mrs. Lisa Brocker, Harden County Crime Victims Assistance Center Director. Good morning, Ms. Brocker. This is a grant that you're looking to apply for. This will be for salaries and supplies? Is that what you're looking for?
And just to, just be able to continue our services and hopefully enhance and add some services as well that are much needed.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Would you like to maybe expand on what kind of services? I know you talked about counseling services.
We have counseling services, legal services as well.
Okay.
There are a few others that we're still doing some research on to make sure that we're going to be able to fit with the current guidelines, and that hopefully, we'll have more information by the end of the week.
Sound good. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number fifteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Young to amend the fiscal year twenty-five Road and Bridge three budget as follows. Transfer twenty-five thousand from the equipment purchase line item zero-one-seven-six-two-three-five-seventy into the salaries overtime line item zero-one-seven-six-two-three-one-five-one. Commissioner?
Yes, this is something that we typically do at the end of the budget year. The auditor would do all of the adjustments at once, but we were advised by the outside auditor that we needed to take care of these as they came up. We have used all of the money in our overtime line item during the emergency callouts that we've had, and we work on Fridays. I always have a foreman and two operators that work on Fridays to kind of catch up on some of the smaller things. It's proven to be very difficult to service the precinct in a forty-hour work week with the amount of employees that we have and the amount that we have to do in the precinct. Just for the record, a couple of weeks ago, when this came about, we had to, we had six new culverts to set, and that is new driveways. We have seen a growth in the precinct over the last couple of years, significant growth. Six doesn't really sound like a lot, but when you're talking about brand-new residences, that is a lot in one week. Last week, we had three. Yesterday, we had two. So, it's on top of trying to do our regular maintenance, but also improve our drainage system that has, I don't know how to say it, but it hasn't been maintained well in a very long time. And our road conditions, just for the public's knowledge, in two thousand and twenty-one, the price of asphalt was sixty-three seventy-five a ton. I went back and looked at our bid sheet, and the bid sheet that we got in March was a hundred and sixty-three dollars. So, typically, we would purchase the asphalt, hire contractors to do our roadwork. So, typically, we would purchase the asphalt, hire a contractor to do our roadwork. We can no longer do that. Um, if I did that, I would be able to do one mile of road in a year. So, we've gone back to oil mixing, which takes longer, takes more equipment, takes the whole crew, and, um, so, it's just, it's been difficult to, um, manage these projects to make our road system and our drainage system better while also keeping up with regular maintenance and the growth that we're having in the precinct. So, um, that's why we work on Fridays.
I have a question for Candace. What happens if we don't address it this year? We let it ride as if we did in the previous years? 'Cause I know this creates a consternation, uh, moving, uh, money into line items and not salaries in the middle of a budget year. And then we address the overtime issue during budget session. Can we let it ride? I mean, 'cause I'm in the same boat, I just looked at my budget this morning, I have five hundred dollars left. So, I anticipate after this Friday, 'cause we have to do some maintenance, uh, that, uh, I will be over on my overtime. Uh, and, uh, I'm in the same boat as Amanda, uh, two hundred and sixty miles, ten people, uh, and generous vacation time. Uh, it's hard to get it all done in forty hours. Uh, typically, I have two to three working, but, uh, on occasion, I have five to six working, depending on the work. This year in particularly, we've lost more rain during this season than we did last year. We had the, the spring storms and it dried for a long time. So, I didn't have to dip into my overtime budget as much last year, 'cause we were able to put together a lot of days together. But people like Holland Road, uh, you've got, uh, Drakeville, you've got, uh, you've got the river roads where people live. You cannot not blade them, you can't go from Tuesday or Wednesday and then go back and blade them Monday or Tuesday when people have to drive back and forth on there. So, we do a lot of blading on Fridays, weather permitting, and set, set culverts, or we do, depending on how many projects we've got lined up. So, the main thing is, this is more for record-keeping, correct?
It, it needs to be addressed before you go over budget, because basically you're spending funds that you haven't set aside for that purpose. And so, uh, presently, we have a healthy fund balance, but we, we, and also too, we just implemented the overtime line item. So, in F Y, went back and looked, in F Y twenty, uh, four.
Twenty-four.
Mm-hmm, and so, in twenty-four is when we added that line item to try to keep up with, you know, overages, because when it's all dumped in the other, it's more difficult to look at and to make sure that you're not going over during the year. Because you really need to, uh, adjust for that before the overs occurs. Um, it's not good practice, uh, to allow that to happen.
So, change, just for those present, those maybe watching video, the change is being, I would say that, say it this way, forced upon us by the outside auditors. But the overtime has to continue. 'Cause there's no way you can operate, I know in our two precincts, without overtime. We don't have enough personnel. I looked at, uh, uh, when did we register four years ago? I took on eighteen miles, yeah, twenty-one, so I took on eighteen additional miles of road with no additional personnel, no additional money. To put it in context, that's seventy percent of what Ernie has. But I didn't get seventy percent of his staff, I didn't get seventy percent of his money, equipment, maintenance, or anything, zero. And so, uh, you can't, you can't have those areas that are that big, uh, you know, when, when you break down how many employees you have per mile, I think I'm at twenty-six miles per employee, where I think Ernie would be at like five miles per employee. So, it's big discrepancy, right? We have to have overtime. And so, as long as the discussion goes, we can't work overtime, I'm okay with whatever we need to do. But the fact that you have to work overtime in our two precincts, that's just a fact, unless you hire additional personnel. But we went the overtime route to try not to hire additional personnel, 'cause I asked for two, and, uh, the court voted it down. So, now I'm stuck with having to work overtime, and we worked a lot of overtime, it's been a lot, it's, it's been raining for a long time. And we, we have to make those up. I don't think, you know, I've got a, I've got a lady that lives out on Drakeville, and, uh, if it rains on Tuesday, I don't think I can make her wait. If, if I need two days for the road to dry out, I can't make her wait seven or eight days to blade her road. She's in her eighties. She has to have access to her road, she, she has to have safe road, so I cannot not send somebody out on a Friday to blade the road. So, the overtime issue, it has to be worked. I guess it comes down to a record-keeping issue. I know Angela, a few years ago, we were doing every budget amendment for like, seemed like two budgets, and then we just stopped. And so, I don't know what the solution is. Uh, not working overtime is not a solution, 'cause most of my guys that are working get three, four weeks of vacation anyway. So, if I use comp time from here to the end of the budget, then we're gonna have eight weeks of vacation, I can't afford to be short that time. Uh, overtime was a way to balance the, balance out what they work and not owe them any more time. So, uh, those are my thoughts on it, uh.
That was another thing, I was asked if, um, we could flex their time or give them comp time instead of, of overtime. That would be defeating the purpose, we'd still be shorthanded, um, and still not able to get the job done. And my constituents are, um, they're demanding more. Uh, we've done a lot in the first four years, but it's, our precinct is so widespread, it's kinda hard, um, to see it all. You know, if you live in, in Lompton or Sour Lake, you're not seeing what's happening on the west end. And if we work on the west end, we're being accused of spending all of our money in Sour Lake and Lompton, it's just, it's always been that fight.
And then when you post it, they blow you up.
Right.
Because you're not in there.
Right.
I'll, I'll say that.
So, we're doing what we can, but, um, it's definitely something that I think we need to address in, in our budget workshops.
Well, I know, uh, like Candace said, we didn't have an overtime line item in the road and bridge departments until fiscal year twenty-four. Angela and Candace and I spent some time, and I think, uh, I believe I talked to Commissioner Kirkendall quite a bit about how much overtime had been worked previously that had been being paid out of, uh, the regular salaries line item, is that right, Candace?
Yes, sir.
And we made sure there was enough in there for fiscal year twenty-four to cover basically, uh, what the previous two years were for overtime, tried to make sure there was enough. We have budget workshops about it, we all sat down and talked about it and felt, felt like it was enough. And then that money carried forward to this year, uh, the same amount, I know each of y'all have thirty-five in overtime in your budgets. Each of y'all have less, I think around five thousand.
I can do zero. That's one thing, I don't have to have it overtime, and a precinct can be run without overtime, that's a conflict in the what? Commissioner Kirkendall.
I would highly disagree.
I would also disagree.
I, I would even.
'Cause I'm, I'm, I'm not really off on Fridays when my guys are working Fridays, 'cause I gotta be able to respond, so I would like three-day weekends every weekend.
Do you not have any emergency callouts?
Emergency callouts would be the only thing. In fact, I would be willing to give up my overtime gift to y'all, but if I thought it was a necessity, but I could come run your precinct without any overtime.
I, I, I wouldn't divide the court on this matter. Uh.
I would be glad to do a field check if you wanted to.
I would, uh, I kinda feel the same way, I, to me, overtime, to me, is whenever we have an emergency callout, something like that. Very few jobs, in my opinion, this is my opinion, can't wait till Monday. That's just my opinion, very few jobs. Uh, it's not like they're emergencies. Um, I know right now, you're down one more, that can hurt. That can hurt. But moving it from, and I was told a while back, a couple of years ago, that we don't need to move from our operations budget to salary budget. But you do have a temporary salary line item. So, I would be in agreeance to move money from there over to the overtime salaries instead of, uh, from the equipment purchases.
So, are we talking about not being able to respond and do our job when it gets to zero? Is that, is that the action of this court? That we cannot respond or work on Fridays when it gets to zero?
I'm, I'm for, uh, her line item here, and I've said in the past, uh, how you run your precinct is your business, not mine. And you're asking to move money that you already have, I'm for it, I'm gonna vote for this. What, what my statement a while ago was, if we come to budget, uh, workshops and we ask to put additional monies in line items, additional money that we don't have in line items for overtime, I probably would be opposed to that, but that's not the situation right here, I, I'm, I'm for this right here.
I have a couple of thoughts, we, we, we've always balanced it out of our budget, so we have to take from somewhere in order to put in overtime, so we're not asking for contingency money. And number two, I think the only thing we should really look at is when we give the, uh, overtime budgets, our employees make considerable less money because we made the adjustment to road and bridge. So, we made the overtime rate, which is time and a half, say, you take a guy making eighteen dollars an hour, he went to twenty-three, the, the, the time and a half rate for eighteen is far less than the overtime rate for twenty-three. And that was never addressed in this budget, and it does have some type of impact. Uh, and, uh, and so, at that rate, what do we do? I don't know, 'cause we, you know, we've always got needs and always got things to address. Uh, but, but that's the only thing I could see in a budget workshop, is we go back to the, you know, take a, take the average of two years, 'cause last year, I don't even know if I used all of mine.
You didn't.
And so, uh, so I would have a carryover from that year more this year, but when you average it, but if you average it at the twenty-two, if you average the hours, kind of the overtime rate between the two. So, let's just say you did ten hours a week, just for simple numbers, at thirty-five dollars an hour for X amount of weeks, then that's a solid way to look at it. But as far as getting a windfall, I mean, uh, I don't need a windfall, I just need to be able to respond. Uh, you know, you got, uh, y'all know this, you got Old Bragg on one end, and you've got Timbersle on the other end. And, uh, they both have to be maintained, and depending on the weather, uh, is when you get to maintain them. And, uh, I would rather not.
This is a good example of, in my opinion, like Courtney said a while ago, it's just opinions, but in my opinion, uh, every vote we make on here counts, and it's not just for that particular line item. And the example that I'm using is, this court gave, uh, county employees an additional holiday last year. Well, now we're talking about overtime, if we wouldn't give them that holiday, maybe we wouldn't need this, you know, so ever, all of this adds up.
I agree.
Do, do you need more personnel, uh, do we need to pay them a higher rate? All of this plays in, into this, so, anyway.
So, if it's record-keeping, I'm for whatever we need to do. Uh, I would be opposed to, uh, saying we can't respond. And, uh, again, I'd like to have three-day weekend every weekend, to be honest.
Me too.
When my guys are working.
I'd like to have a two-day weekend every weekend.
I know, I'm available, so.
But, uh, I just wanna share this thought I was making earlier, and that is that we, we put our budgets together and we agree to live within those budgets. We, uh, as the budget officer, I expect everybody that has a budget to live within those budgets. And we have a policy here, at least to my knowledge, that we don't transfer money from operations into salaries or vice versa. And I think we've stuck with that pretty well. Uh, Commissioner Cook brought up that you have, uh, a line item for temporary employees, and I think it's around twelve thousand, if I'm not mistaken.
It's fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Have you spent any of it?
No.
What if, uh, would you be agreeable to transfer all of that into overtime and live within that the rest of the year?
Sure.
I think that would be amenable to me.
Yes.
So, this is just for discussion, 'cause I'm not on the, uh, agenda. But, uh, B B's missing more this week, or this year because of her husband.
Sure.
Uh, I have two thousand eight hundred dollars left in my temporary budget, 'cause I've had more people fill in for her. And then quite a few where I'm rolling the phone over to my phone and taking calls, and, 'cause I don't have anybody available to work. But that's not gonna work in my case. So, at some point, you know, uh, I don't know what we'll do, but, 'cause I think this court got really divided today. 'Cause we'd have to tell our constituents that we wanna work, but this court took the action, and we can't respond until Monday. If, if, if the policy's becoming that you can't pay the overtime. And I don't like it, I'm not gonna be ugly-spirited about it, but I disagree with it, and again, if y'all can come run it, come run it. No imitation.
I'll move to, uh, transfer the amount that you quit off Wallyville, fourteen thousand.
Fourteen four sixty-nine.
Fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the salaries temporary line item to the salaries overtime line item in the road and bridge three budget.
Second.
I made a motion, yes, sir. Seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any further discussion?
So.
Yes, sir.
Just for my frame of reference, 'cause I'm about to do this next court. Uh, if I don't have it, and the situation is different, but B B, we never takes time off, it's having to take a lot of time off adjacent. So, I've used more, but I mean, I don't have fourteen thousand budgeted. Uh, I've got, uh, I've got fifty-one hundred budgeted in my, so I have a third of what Amanda has budgeted.
I think you had moved some of your temporary money into salaries at one point in time a while back, 'cause I think y'all used to both have the same temporary line item.
Could you look that up for historical purposes?
I could look.
Yeah. So, 'cause again, I'm not being disagreeable, I just have to look.
Have you had any time where you've had a vacancy where maybe some money's left in your salaries? I mean, I would like to see it stay in your salary money, within salary money, but if you can, I just think we look at it and say, we wouldn't do. I did, but I just feel strongly about asking everybody to stay with what is budgeted. Uh, and go back to what the discussion was earlier, Darla, with, uh, our outside auditor who come to Angela, I wanna say it was last December, or at least that's when Angela told me, and said that we had to stop spending money that we didn't have in line items. And that was not, uh, an appropriate accounting practice, and the money needs to be in line item before we spend it.
So.
So.
I have a question.
That's why this change has happened, instead of doing a five-page amendment at the end of the year. Do it as we go, and we used to do that, like you said, for somewhere along the way, that went by the wayside and it kinda got out of hand.
So, here's my question, we just gave, uh, a legal secretary in the D A's office a stipend of seven fifty a month, taken from something other than salaries that was not budgeted. What's the difference between the D A getting that money and a commissioner getting that money?
She is, she is charging, uh, defendants, criminals, uh, money to be on a pretrial diversion program and using that money to pay her secretary for the additional work she's having to do to keep up with the pretrial diversion program, the way I understand it from the request that she submitted.
And that was okay, but this one is not?
I agree, yeah. 'Cause she's charging the criminal defendants for that and getting that money and paying her extra for the extra work.
It just seems.
She's asking her to do extra work for the same amount of money, now she's using the extra money she's getting to pay her for the extra work.
Well, Tyler County pays their foreman, and you can go check on this. So many hours every day they're on call on the weekend, whether or not they get called out, we do not. So, if we start comparing, but the moment you hamstring a commissioner in one of these big precincts, that's having to work. I mean, what my, my biggest takeaway today is, y'all think our guys are riding the clock. My guys will watch this, 'cause they watch it every week, that our precincts can be run without overtime. And I'll tell you, that they're gonna disagree with you. Uh.
I have two guys that came from precinct four, and they thought the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Until they got there.
Correct. And so, uh, they're gonna hear that, uh, I'm saddened by that, 'cause I've served faithfully for, I'm in my fifteenth year, I've completed fourteen years, that y'all wouldn't trust me to run my precinct in an integrous way. That's what I heard today, more than anything, 'cause this is really a procedural thing.
So, I apologize if anything I said made you feel that way, but that's not how I feel.
So, this is a procedural thing, as far as working, I have to be able to respond.
There was a motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number sixteen, setting the public hearing to consider a request by Commissioner Young concerning setting of a speed limit of thirty miles per hour on the following county roads in the Countrywood Estates, uh, subdivision. Morris Road, Bernura Road, Lawrence Lane, Creekside Loop, Countrywood Boulevard, and Countrywood Circle. You wanna set that for the, uh, next regular meeting?
Yes, sir.
You wanna do it right before, at nine forty-five, is that good?
Yes, sir.
So, I think that's July eighth, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So, uh. So, uh, is that a motion?
Yes.
Nine forty five, July the eighth. Setting by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seventeen, consider approval of request by Mr. Aaron Tupper, emergency management coordinator, to authorize the county judge to execute D R forty four eighty five Texas COVID nineteen pandemic sub grant award contract and any other required documents with the Texas Division of Emergency Management outlining the terms of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, D R four four eight five, project zero five two two, Arden County Boggy Creek Drainage Study, an amount of seven hundred seventy seven thousand, including the local cost share of seventy four thousand to be paid by Arden County. This, uh, item was not on the draft agenda that went out to everyone because we did not get notified that this, uh, award, that the county had been awarded this grant until, uh, let's say about before eight A M. Friday morning. And so I asked y'all to get it added to the agenda. Thank you for getting that done.
Same.
Thank you.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young. Seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
So seventy four thousand become a contingency.
Uh, I think we have a line item in the Commissioner's Court budget that should cover this for, uh, grant matches. But if not, then yes, we would have to take it out of the contingencies. And what, when we get ready to do the budget for this, then we'll move that money at that time. On the, uh, same thing on the Mill Creek project. We didn't move any money today. We just, uh, committed that the county would pay it and we'll move it later once we do the setup and grant for, for the, uh, budget for these two projects. Is that right, Candace?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eighteen, discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including announcements which may be of interest to the public. Going to start off by saying the fiscal year twenty six budget, I'm about three weeks behind on that, but I'm working on it. My plan is to have everybody's worksheets to them, uh, where they propose budget no later than next Monday. And then we will start having workshops as soon as we can thereafter. I'm sure that our first workshop will be, uh, probably during the next regular meeting on July the eighth. And then, um, as I send those to y'all, if you have any questions or would like to discuss anything, as always, let me know and we'll be glad to do that.
I would be happy to.
Yes, sir. That's right. And then I want to also address the, uh, construction going on here at the courthouse with the remodeling of the restrooms. They're running behind, all contractors run behind always. But, uh, one thing I want to bring up is something that Mr. Tupper found on Friday. The, uh, toilets and sinks are supposed to be run by automated, uh, flushers and faucets, and they put in manual. So in a discussion yesterday, the architect said that the, uh, drawings and the bid plans did not include the touchless, uh, devices that are supposed to be in there, which is a big mistake. So, uh, we're going to work through that. Most likely those two restrooms will get back online, they're saying mid-July. I hope they stick to that. It was supposed to have been online by next week. Uh, but we may have to come back later and install those touchless devices. So I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. We just learned it Friday and, uh, discussed it with the contractor and the architect, and they're working on a solution for that. And of course, how much that's going to cost, uh, to get it done. There is a contingency line item in that project, so we shouldn't, definitely, should definitely have the funds available. But, uh, hate to see that happen and we'll bring that up hopefully at the next meeting. Any other discussion items or any announcements that anyone would like to make?
Mr. Adams forgot his check.
Excellent. Great news. Thank you. And thank you for all the work tracking that down the other day.
We tried.
Thank y'all.
All right. Anything else? Any other official have any other discussion item or announcement? All right, we'll move to item nineteen.
Move to it, John.
Have a motion back to Mr. Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.